All right, we're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with GetOiling. I am Coach Ashley, and we are joined this week by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everybody. We're glad you're here. Thanks for coming.
Yes, very excited to see you all here. Go ahead and pop over in the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Got some questions for you guys when we get started, but just a little bit of housekeeping. This is our weekly work session. We do this every single week, every Thursday at noon Eastern time. You don't have to be a member of GetOiling to join and benefit from this. All you have to be is someone who is interested in growing your Young Living business, ideally using the internet, because we are here to teach you how to do that today. And of course, there's offline strategies that work with us as well, but our entire system of GetOiling is created to help you build smarter, right? Work smarter, not harder, and to see a lot more success a lot more quickly in your efforts of growing your business and duplicating your organization. So happy to have you all here. If you haven't gotten started with GetOiling yet, you can go to GetOiling.com and start with us for just $1 for your very first month, and we'd be happy to serve you. And you will be learning more about how you can use our system on this call today. Today's call is focused very specifically on a relatively new file type called Sway, created by Microsoft. It's become very popular with Young Living distributors to share and to educate. And that is really exclusively our topic today is using Sways. So let me pull my chat up over here so I can say hello. Hey, what's up, everybody? Got some familiar faces and some new folks here, too. Great. All right, I'm going to share my screen. I do have some slides put together for you guys, and I want to start off with a question for you. If I could get my share up here, just one second. All right, perfect.
There it is.
All right, today we're going to talk about seven ways to use Sway to grow your Young Living business. So first, I got a poll for you guys. How do you use Sway? If you are using Sway, which I suspect quite a few of you, or you've at least seen one, and you're curious how you might be able to use them, but if you're using Sways, pop a response in our chat here and let us know how you like to use them. Do you use them in person and scroll through them? Do you send them via email? Do you... What are the ways that you like to share your Sways? Oops, sorry about that.
Yeah, we're getting some responses in here. Let's see. Tanya says, "Just press one Sways." I'm not sure what that is. "Using it for classes via text mostly," kind of a link to an e-magazine. Ton says, "I just recently learned about it." "Text and email." Somebody says, "I don't. I'm scared." "I use them as classes on the GetOiling study. I've sent by email." All sorts of answers here. Newsletters.
All right. Yeah, so this has become so ubiquitous, a means of sharing Young Living, that it can't be ignored, right? And having the resources that we have available for you to expand your reach and to leverage your presence and to reach more people at once and follow up more effectively and stay organized, and so on, and so on. It's really important that we help to show you the ways that you can integrate this really cool file into your use of GetOiling and really maximize those efforts that you're making. So excited to hear your input, you guys, and I think that you're going to be excited to see some of the ways that you can put them to use in your system. All right, so today we're going to cover first, we're obviously going to talk about what Sways are for those of you who have no idea what we're talking about, to be fair. But we're going to talk about how you can use Sways as lead magnets. And if you don't know what a lead magnet is, it's basically that thing that you're offering that gets someone to opt in on a landing page. So you've got a page that says, "Hey, I've got five tips on how to use lemon oil to transform X, Y, and Z." And they're like, "Oh, I want to transform X, Y, and Z. Please show me how to do that with lemon oil." They put their name and their email in, and then that thing that teaches them on the other side, that's a lead magnet, all right? So you can use your Sways as lead magnets. You don't even have to create a new lead magnet if you're buying some of these really great done-for-you Sways that are out there. You can also turn your Sways into sign-up and ordering machines. This is really exciting, you guys. There are ways for you to actually make your Sways click off to the Young Living site where people can place orders and sign up for memberships. We're going to show you how you can do that today. You can also embed your Sways on your GetOiling blog. This is exciting, right? So if you want to teach about something like self-care, which that's a literal example we're going to be using today, you can, in addition to maybe sharing some of your anecdotal information on your blog, you can also include a Sway where, again, people can scroll through. They can learn more in that story format that Sway is so great at, and they can also click off of that presentation to go purchase your oils. Exciting stuff, right? Also, we're going to talk about how you can creatively use Sways online and offline. All right, so first, what is Sway? So Sway is, I think it's been out for maybe three, four years now, and it is a part of the Microsoft 365 suite. And so some of you guys might have, if you are on PC computers, you've got Microsoft Word, Excel, stuff like that, PowerPoint. They have online versions of these things, and Sway is part of that. You can actually get Sway and use it for free online. It's similar to a PowerPoint in some ways in that you are giving a presentation, but it's a lot easier to share, right? If you've ever given somebody a PowerPoint presentation, they got to kind of awkwardly click through, you know, and see all of the animations and this and that if it's there. It's really great if you're doing a presentation like we're doing right now, actually taking you point by point and narrating through a process. PowerPoints are fabulous for that. But if you want to give somebody something that they can scroll through and read and explore on their own time, this is a really, really great format to use. All right, it's also customizable, right? It's interactive, and it's clickable, like we were mentioning earlier. Turning this into a one-click ordering machine, this is something that is really powerful. But yes, you could get, say, like a PDF or a PowerPoint that you could share, but this is just so much more dynamic. And you know what I forgot to put on here, Greg? It's mobile-friendly.
Yes, that's super important.
Yeah, they're so good for mobile sharing and on-the-go, and we'll get into more of that later. You could also get these pre-made, and we'll talk about where we get them, where a lot of you guys get them. It's probably all from the same place, but we'll shout them out here shortly. And they're also a duplicable way to share with a little asterisk, because the activity behind what you do is really the critical piece of duplication. However, if you or, say, one of your new members, if you don't feel comfortable or your new member doesn't feel comfortable with articulating their knowledge of the product yet or your knowledge of the product in that case, or even in tech proficiency, you can take something like this, duplicate it, plug in that different information, i.e. your member number and those coded links, which we'll teach you how to do today, so that it then becomes a shareable tool for your team, so that effort can duplicate. And it's also just a fantastic way to create educational resources for your members and your team. And you can go and start with Sway at sway.microsoft.com. You will have to have, I believe it's a Microsoft account, or maybe they have another name for it, but they have that free membership there, so you can go and actually start using them right away. And here we go. Promise to shout out, the Sways that we are using today were created by a cool company called Grow Workspace. They are Young Living distributors, and they create beautiful Sway files and lots of other really cool stuff for Young Living distributors. And we are, we actually see here at GetOiling what they're producing at Grow Workspace to be very complimentary to the tools that we offer you. So if you don't want to create all of your content, they have beautiful content like Sways that you can come over to GetOiling and plug into your system. So really, really great resource that pairs well with GetOiling. All right, so let's talk about lead magnets, all right? So Sways make really great lead magnets, and I want to show you some ways that you can do this. And first, we'll talk about some of the key points that you need to keep in mind if you're going to use your Sway as a lead magnet. So here's the steps that you'll follow to set this up, and I will show you what this looks like. And we'll kind of re-go over some of these steps if you guys have questions. So just bear in mind that you will get a recording of this, and you can take notes. All right, so first, you want to create a campaign, right? When you create a funnel, you start with a campaign. So create that campaign that includes either or, a combination of, a page with your Sway embedded, and I'll show you what that looks like again here in just a moment, a link to your Sway, which is another option, or a downloadable PDF of your Sway, right? So this means that when someone opts in to a landing page and they get your lead magnet, you also want them to get an email. So in your attached campaign, these are the things that you're going to want to include, one or several of these. Then you're going to take your Sway and you're going to embed it on a custom page. This is optional, but it looks really cool, and it's got some really powerful properties to it, we'll say. And I'll explain those as I visually take you through this process. Then you'll create your landing page that sells the Sway that you want to share and use as a lead magnet. You'll link your campaign that you've just created to that landing page, and then you'll link that Sway or the page that you've just created with a Sway embedded. All right, deep breath. I'm going to walk you through that. All right, keep these things in mind when you are using Sways for lead magnets. Make sure that the Sway that you're using is interest or outcome-focused, right? There are Sways that are beautiful, that say Grow Workspace, which we've mentioned have made, that maybe are a little more Young Living keyword-driven, right? So if we're talking about, "I've got my premium starter kit. Now what?" That's an actual Sway. That's something that's not going to be as interesting to a lead as it is to somebody who's already a member, right? So stick with things that are interest or outcome-focused. So essential oils for rescue pets, or tips for practicing self-care. These are things that are going to be interesting to people who are not in the fold, who don't really know that much or anything at all about Young Living yet. That's the kind of thing that you want to use as a lead magnet, because it's going to pique the curiosity of people without them putting the wall up and feeling like you're about to try to sell them stuff, right? So you want to make that easy, make it interesting, and make it outcome-focused or interest-focused. All right, so if you didn't know Young Living, right? If you right now, if you could imagine, you knew nothing about Young Living, what would you opt in for? What would you trade your contact information in order to receive? So think about it that way, when you are selecting a Sway or even creating a Sway that you would use as a lead magnet. You also want to make sure that in your Sway, you've got those links if you do link off to product in your Sway that's coded to your Young Living member number. Bonus, you could also attach campaigns to this funnel that keep your prospects engaged. So in the example I'm going to be showing you, one of our members, Jackie, has created a funnel that teaches people the types of oils and certain practices that go along with taking care of rescued animals, right? So oils for rescued animals. Now, there is a Sway that has that, but she also created a campaign that leaks out over seven days, drip, 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 that teaches people the different types of oils, why Young Living is the important manufacturer to choose for these oils because of purity, and so on. And so there's that bonus that's attached to them as well. So they're not only going to get the benefit of receiving that Sway, they're also going to get more information that's going to help them get closer to making that decision of getting their premium starter kit and, you know, starting the process of ditch and switch, right? Another bonus, provide an opportunity for consult with you. This is a really cool thing that you can do as well, and something that I'm going to show you how to do here in just a moment. So if I can turn this share off real quick, do we have any questions so far? Just before I blaze ahead here.
Let's see, a couple of questions here. I would like to know how to share Sway and not have it in the edit version. Lynn asked that. I think that's something we could probably demo here as well. I think there's a setting when you're sharing that. And then Wendy asks if we're offering them or teaching us to make them, and we're not offering them ourselves, but we'll teach you how here, as well as how to share the existing ones that you can buy from other places.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Probably should have included that at the outset here. We're not here qualified to teach you how to build a Sway. There are definitely folks out there like Grow Workspace who are doing a phenomenal job where you can actually purchase them from them à la carte. You know, you can choose the ones that you want. I think they have memberships that you can purchase as well, where you get access to maybe a bundle of them and so on. It's a really great resource. And what we are showing you today are Sways that we have not made, but have been made by Grow Workspace that our members use. And in this case, this is Jackie. I don't know if you're here with us today, Jackie, but we are demoing a funnel that we have helped you create on your site here. So what you see here, you can see this, right? The landing page, Greg?
Yes, yep.
Perfect. All right, so this is essential oils for rescued animals. And the, let me see if I have it. I want to view this way. So I want to show you guys this way first. This is actually what it looks like in the edit. I'm going to copy this link here. All right. This is what the Sway looks like on the page. Well, no, that's not it. I want to play it. There we go. Perfect. So this is essential oils for rescue animals. And you see how it has animations? We've got information here. It'll even embed and play videos. Isn't that cool? And this is where it does get a lot more powerful than just sending, say, a PowerPoint or a PDF to someone, because inside of this form, you don't have to go off of it. You can actually play a video while they're still scrolling through. And when you're doing anything that pertains to internet marketing, right? If you're trying to lead people through the digital world on a journey to make a set of decisions that you would really like to guide them toward making, you want to provide them with as few options as possible to move forward. You want to narrow that hallway so that the options at the end of it are really just door number, premium starter kit. So that's kind of what we're heading for here, and keeping everything inside of one pretty little page really helps to do that. All right, so we've got information here on different types of animals that are helped with this. You've got information about quality. There's seed to seal mentioned here. All right, now we've got some recipes. Check this out. I've already edited her Sway to do this. So you see how lavender, I can hover over it and click it. Check out where it goes. All right, so it goes straight to the Young Living site, right? So I'm going to hit Add to Cart. I'm going to go Check Out. And this is Jackie. So it's already coded to her. So if your prospect received this and they were like, "Oh, yeah, that sounds like the perfect thing for me. I want to go get that," they can actually just click off and go straight to it. That's where you turn these files into the ordering and enrollment machines that they can be if you've got those links in place, all right? So you see, there's more here. Obviously, you've got the animations as you scroll. That's really cool. Again, you can click off if you put the links in place. And we've got some really cool stuff to show you in terms of how you can do that here in just a little bit on our call. But yeah, so this is what the Sway looks like. Now, when you get your Sway, you can edit it, if I can find the one. There it is. Okay. You can actually edit it here, and we'll show you some of the things that we would suggest that you would do here shortly. But here is the landing page that is going to use that Sway that we just looked at as a lead magnet, okay? So what people are opting in for here is her guide called Essential Oils for Rescue Animals. So I'm going to put my information in here. And by the way, you guys, this is a landing page template. This is available to you inside of your GetOiling suite. And if you have it enabled, you can actually have your information showing up beneath your beneath your landing pages like Jackie does here. I think it's a really great option to use. So I'll put my information here and show you guys where we go next. And then I'm going to show you how to build it. All right, so there's my information, sending my free info on oils for rescues. All right. Okay, so you've opened your heart and home to a rescue. Here's how you can support their physical and emotional well-being for a long, happy, healthy life. Scroll through the presentation below to learn my secrets. Now, Sway is right here, and right here, we're still on Jackie's website. Oops, you're not supposed to see that yet. Anyway, so here's, this is that same presentation that we were just looking at, right? And it still has that great clickable capacity to take you off to where you could order directly from Jackie in this instance. All right, so you can go through the presentation here. And she says, "Ready to learn how to support your whole family's wellness? I can show you how. It's simple. Click the button below to schedule your free consultation." So you do that. And Jackie says, "17 years ago, I made a decision to transform my family's lifestyle and made the switch to 100% natural products for all of our daily needs. We've been happier, healthier, and wealthier ever since. Now, I'm on a mission to help other families like mine. Apply below for a free 30-minute consultation with me. Together, we'll uncover simple shifts that you can make today to transform your wellness." So we've got name, email, phone, your pets, type, breed, and age, and do you currently use essential oils, and then you set up the consult. Pretty cool, right? So you're not just sharing your Sway, you're showing people that there's more here, that there's more that you can help them with, and you're giving them that opportunity. Now, let's break down how we did this. All right, so I'm going to go to, first, under Contacts, we're going to go to Settings. I'm in Jackie's account here. Remember, every funnel starts with a campaign, and it can be incredibly simple, your campaign. It can be one message, all right? So I've already created this, and it's called Oils for Rescues. Obviously, you create a campaign by clicking the Create Campaign button. There's lots of training on how to create campaigns inside of our training resources and on recordings of this weekly work session as well. All right, so Jackie has already created a seven-day email series where she's teaching about different oils that work well for rescue pets and why. But you could do this just as simply as creating a single email for day zero. That means it sends immediately. That says, "You're in. Here's what's next." Say hello. Customize it by using this field right here that says your contact's name. And, "Did you get a copy of Essential Oils for Rescue Pets?" What this is right here is the link to that page that we were just on. This guy right here.
Could I just interrupt a second? Could you shrink the browser height a little bit? The font is kind of tiny.
Yeah, yeah.
Last time. Yeah, a little bit more, if you could.
Okay.
A little bit more.
Okay.
There, perfect.
All right, cool.
I can read it.
Gigantic screen. All right, so anyway, what you're going to do is you're going to create this. You will go back and edit these different aspects as you work through your funnel. I am going to go a little quickly through this process just to kind of map out how this works. We do have a full funnel training in the playlist of our Get Growing Weekly Work Session, which you can find at youtube.com/getoiling. We have that there, and the training is called "The Funnel", and that gives you an in-depth on how to create funnels. All right, so going back to, so you can actually create additional campaigns here, or additional, sorry, messages in your campaign. And then the next thing you're going to do is going back to that next step in creating this funnel. You'll either just use the link to the Sway, that's one option. But if you want to use this more powerful way to entice people toward further steps, now you're going to create a custom page. This is where you put your lead magnet. This is your deliverable. So now we're going to go right down here under my site. We're going to go to Settings. We're going to go to Custom Pages. And in this page, I actually created a page, and I selected this template right here, this professional services template. And actually, both instances where I used a custom page, I used a template. I recommend, if you're going to make one, always use a template, because you can just change out the different aspects of it very easily, and it's not as overwhelming as it can be starting from scratch. So this is the one I selected, and here's what I did with it. Guide for Rescue Pets. All right, so here's that page that I showed you guys, right? Now, you can put all kinds of information here, right? But what you want to make sure that you do in order to embed this right here, it's actually quite simple, is we're going to, if I could find it. Close that out. All right, here we go. So here's our Sway file. We're going to share this, and we're going to get the embed code, okay? So copy this. Get Embed Code. Copy to clipboard. Now, what I'm about to show you, this is something that is going to be possible for you. Let's see, that's not the editable one, sorry. Okay. This is going to be possible for you at, is it premium and above, Greg, for the HTML editing? Okay.
Correct, yep.
This isn't just a secret, and then I'm going to show you one more that also works well, but isn't quite, you know, the perfect ideal, right? Okay, so I'm going to delete this, actually. Just backspace to delete.
Does it keep coming back on you?
Yeah, it's not letting me delete it. Anyway, okay, well, tell you what. Here, I'm going to enter down, and I'm just going to embed another one. All right, so guys, do you see this right here where it says Code View? And you can embed videos this way as well. You can embed lots of things. Videos, obviously, are easier if you hit the insert right there. But to do your Sway, you're going to hit Code View. Now, if this makes you super nervous, take a deep breath. I know it makes me nervous. Don't touch anything. Just hit Command or Control and V to paste, all right? And do nothing else. And then go right over here, over into this corner. You see that same code thing that closes it up, all right? Now it's there, all right? Now, the other option that you have, and tell you what, I'm going to, I'm just going to do it from scratch just to show you guys. So create a page, professional services. Here's, okay, so I'm going to delete that. Hit Enter a couple of times. Code View. Paste it. And then close that, and it shows up, all right? The other option that you have is, where is that? Is the embed on the menu? I'm not seeing it.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Yeah, it should be on there. Let me check on this.
We were making some changes today, but here's some other ways, just while we're still here. There's different ways that you can share this. Oh, here's. If you're going to use this as a lead magnet, you guys, on your Sway, you want to make sure that you un-click this. Viewers can see share buttons, because when you are creating something that people have to give up something for, in this case, their information, you want to make sure that it's not an easily shareable thing, right? It feels more exclusive this way. So if you're going to be posting on your blog, then certainly include the share buttons. But if you're going to keep it exclusive, remove the share buttons from it, just to keep integrity in that sense. All right. Now, if you are, do you think that maybe that disappeared in our update today, Greg?
It probably did. I'm doing a quick check here.
Okay, sure, all right.
I'll get that back here in a minute.
Hold tight, guys, for just a second. There is an embed capacity that's available to you as well. That's not just this Code View that is available at premium and above plans. You do have, just so you guys know, as you go up in plans with GetOiling, it doesn't just increase your capacity to contact and reach more people as your team and your membership base grows. It also allows you to have more control over the way things look and behave on your website. So the more professional control, the more branding control you want to have over your site, over the way that it looks and performs, that increases with the membership level that you have. And so you do have an actual HTML editor, which was all of that scary code you just saw, for those of you who are scared by code, who I think is most of us. That's a capability that starts at premium. All right, so tell you what, while we investigate the disappearing embed link that is available at basic and up, correct? Is that right, Greg?
Yes, that should be basic and up here.
All right, cool. I'm going to pop over to our our landing pages and go ahead and show you how we created the landing page. And it's actually quite simple. Again, going back to Oils for Rescue Animals right here. I grabbed this image here of a lady's hand holding a dog's paw off of Google, actually. And the way that you can create a background image like that on your landing pages is by going to Settings and just selecting Page Background. You can then upload an image of your choice there, all right? So I've included a title, of course, some information here. It's all very simple and straightforward, right? You want to be congruent with what is in the lead magnet. So in this case, we're definitely talking about Essential Oils for Rescue Animals, as well as a seven-day email course that follows in her instance. Then we want to go over to our Settings and go to Page Settings. Then we want to go over to our Settings and go to Page Settings. You're going to give it a name. It's going to duplicate the name and the link path, so don't worry. You can add tags. So the people who opt in here are going to be tagged with certain interests, for instance, on your, inside of your Get Oiling Manager, your contact manager. You choose the campaign that we created in that first step, remember? So this is Oils for Rescue. So they're going to automatically receive that first email after they opt in here. Now, if you did not want to create an additional page and you wanted to send somebody straight to the sway, what you can do is click this box and choose to show a message after registration and then have the link to the sway there, just a clickable link, right? Just the URL, no code necessary, if you wanted to do it that way. But this way, again, it's not just you sending an email out and saying, hey, here, click this, watch it. If you're sending out a funnel like this with a landing page on the front, what you're going to get is people opting in so that you know that they opened up and clicked, so that you know that there's a chance, that a higher chance that they actually looked at that information. And so that you now know as well that they're receiving that drip, drip, drip of emails, if you've put them there, about different products that might be mentioned in the sway and so on. Another option that you have, you guys, is right down here, and you don't even have to show a message after registration in this case, is to just take the URL for the sway and just copy that right here. But what I've done in this case, if you want to duplicate the aspect here of Jackie's funnel, is just to take that custom page that we created. And I don't have it up right now. Here, I'll copy it and show you, just to remind you guys. This is the page that it'll go to. So you just grab this right here. We copy this, go over here, paste it right here, and you're done, right? Make sure you save before you exit, and then you have a landing page that you can go and share, and you can view that. And of course, if you have it enabled under My Site Settings, you will have your About information right underneath, which is really exciting. Now, there's one other aspect to this. So right now, you've seen that from a landing page, somebody can immediately receive a sway, either at the sway file page itself or a sway that's embedded in a custom page in Get Oiling. And in this case, a custom page that also has a button for them to find out how they can actually set up a one-on-one meeting, right? An exploratory call. And actually, let's see what that looks like, because I did another cool thing here, you guys. There's a second campaign and page attached to this. So remember, you land here, you opt in because you want to find out about Essential Oils for Rescued Animals. Then you land here, and you check out this really beautiful sway presentation. You might click off, you might get curious. But then you see that I can schedule a free consultation to help you even more, right? So I'm going to click that. Let me go ahead and put my name in here. I'm going to show you what happens on the next page. All right, and I have a dog called Wally, and he is a Bichon mix. And yes, I use oils. Let's set up my consult. Now we're on a final custom page. Hi, I'm looking forward to our call. You're one step closer to greater wellness purpose and abundance. See those keywords? But I'm not talking about Young Living yet, right? So thanks for filling out an application for a private call with me. Keep an eye on your inbox. Look for an email titled "Scheduling Our Call", and be sure to reply with two times that worked for you this week. In the meantime, go ahead and start writing down your top three wellness goals. We'll go over ways to reach them quickly on our call. Now, what happened here is you go to this landing page, right? And then this page actually has another landing form attached to it. This is the lead form. So this right here is, and I can show you here in just a moment, this has its own campaign and then following page attached to it. So you basically got a landing page backed by a landing page that then lands you squarely with someone who is ready to have a 30-minute call with you. How cool would it be if you could have a bunch of people opting in for that?
That is awesome. By the way, the button should be back. You might have to refresh it, but yeah.
Okay, cool. So let me go back over to our custom pages, because that is where we were. So we go to My Site Settings, and then we go to Custom Pages. All right, so that was our guide for Rescue Pets. All right, so that's... So we showed you one way to embed this. And I'm going to show you one more. If we go back over to our sway. There we go. We're going to share. And actually, in this case, I think with the embed, that's actually quite easy. You just copy this link. So you copy the URL for your sway and go back over here. All right, and you see this guy right here? Let me see if I can zoom in. This little guy right here, this is who we're clicking now. And now we're going to paste in the URL to embed. And it works that way as well. Now, it does look a little different, you'll notice. It'll have sway right here, and it says Powered by Embedly, which is a plugin that we use with the Get Oiling sites. And this is also a way that you could embed on your blog, but anywhere that you would want to embed. If you want this wider display here, and you don't want to have the sway and the powered by, or even if you wanted to, say, embed and customize the width and the height, right, of the presentation that you wanted to make, that's a capability that you're going to find at premium and above with the Get Oiling membership. So there's two ways to do that. Now let me go ahead and get rid of that one. And now, now you know how to embed on your custom pages. Let me show you guys really quickly on Page Settings here. If you wanted to do what I have here for Jackie, right? So you've started on this page. Where did it go? I'm not on it. There it is. Okay, you started on this page, and then it takes you to this one, right? And then they've got this option to get a free consultation. So if you want to do that, you're going to go to Settings. You're going to go to Lead Capture Settings. Also, make sure that this page is available by link only, because this is, you know, in keeping with, okay, you can't see this unless you give me your email, right? So you want to make sure it's not just available to everybody. Otherwise, what's the purpose of them giving you their email? We've removed the footer and header and just kept it published. All right, so in Lead Capture Message, this is where we put Jackie's note about how long ago she made this decision and what it's done for her and how she's opening this opportunity up to work with people. So what we've done here is we've created this opportunity to apply, and you're able to do that with a custom page in Get Oiling. And I believe you... How many custom pages do you get starting with Basic right now, Greg?
It's 10 at Basic and unlimited at Premium.
All right, so if you're at Basic, you can do this. If you are at premium, you can do this as many times as you want, right? So you can use these custom Lead Capture fields to require things such as name, email, and phone. If you're trying to get someone to set up a consult with you, I would make all of this required. And in this case, because this funnel is definitely centered around pets, so tell me about your pets here. And then, do you currently use oils? That's an important thing to ask before you actually start really investing your time with a lead, because if they're already, for instance, a member of Get Oiling, I'm sorry, of Young Living. Complete those two sometimes when I talk, then, you know, then you might want to just have them subscribe to your blog for more tips, right? As opposed to trying to sell them something they already have. All right, and then you've got your options here. You can choose when this stuff shows up. Now, there is one campaign that's attached to this. It's got one message attached to it that says, as promised on the other page that you guys already saw, that they just need to hit Reply with two times that worked for them. All right, so before we go too far off into double funnel land, because I know this can get pretty complicated, let's hop back on track here and talk about how we can turn those sway files into those signup machines we talked about, right? So let's see. Oh, Len is mentioning that a lot of this information is available in the sway from Grow Workspace. Again, if you guys want assistance or greater understanding of how to use the sways themselves, then you can definitely find those there if you are using that service. All right, so I'm going to stop my share here. And maybe we can catch up and take a breather. If anybody has any questions about what they saw just now, let me know. And if you would like really just like an in-depth step-by-step on maybe setting up a funnel or a form like that, raise your hand if you're here right now, and maybe we can create a cool, little bonus training for you guys. And this is the type of thing that we would be discussing as well in terms of strategy in our upcoming Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive, which does start next week. We'll talk about more of that at the end of this call as well. All right.
Yeah, lots of hands going up here, and a lot of questions, looks like.
All right. Great, great, great. Now, this stuff is, once you get the hang of building stuff like this and seeing how things connect to each other, it becomes easier. I think the most important thing you can remember to do is to just get started. And that'll make things more comfortable for you. This is actually a very, very easy, very easy system to use for somebody who is not particularly techie. And again, as with anything, just in practice. All right, so Jan likes the idea of putting sway, excuse me, on a custom page, much more professional. I agree. And I think also, from a strategic perspective, Jan, it's important to make sure that people understand that the information you're sharing with them is of high value, and they have to give up something to get it. And that just means that they're opting in to receive some emails from you. How big of a bridge is that to cross, right? All right. All right, definitely some folks excited to see the recording of this as well. All right, so let's talk about really quickly how you can first get your link to share a Young Living product on a sway file, and then how you can embed that in the sway, like what we saw. Let's see. Helen, a custom page is, it would be a page on your Get Oiling site. Yes, and you could make a custom page your homepage if you wanted to. But it is, it's specifically just a page builder. You can build beautiful custom pages using our software. All right. Let's see.
Couple of questions and Q&amp;A here. So Debbie asked, what size photo is ideal for the landing page background? I assume she's talking about the one with the initial funnel that you had there. That bigger, probably, so I would say a little bit wider than tall. So probably something like 2,000 by 1,500 would be a good size for that landing page background.
And you can play around with it as well, just to kind of see what fits where. This actually is much smaller than that. Honestly, I was, I wanted to make sure that I had something that looked really good and grabbed it off of Google, and it was like 700, 200.
Oh, nice.
More in that neighborhood. Yeah.
It does stretch to fit, so it should work.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Tell you what, here, I'm going to go back over and share this real quick. We can continue going through the Q&amp;A while we're here, but I want to go ahead and just show you guys something really cool here. So what I have right here, this is actually where we have our Blog Post Editor. This is not a post that we're going to publish, but this is a practice that I would recommend for you. If you're going to, say, for instance, take your sway... And let me close this. So I'll just use this as an example. So this is our Essential Oils for Rescue Animals, and Jackie has clickable links in here, right? So this is that same one that we've already seen. And when we scroll down here to where we start talking about specific products, here's lavender, right? And all you have to do in this way is to highlight text and hit Link, and then you can put in your link. Now Greg, just today, before our call, created this amazing thing where you can get your own link that will click off to go to the Young Living site, to purchase that product, coded to you, set up a central awards, coded to you. And let's talk about how you do that. Now, the first thing that you're going to want to do is you're going to want to go to the Young Living site. And so this is youngliving.com/... Excuse me. This is English, US. Obviously, do this for wherever you are in the world. It's the products page. Select, so you want to search for your products. I'm going to do lavender. All right, lavender essential oil. Go up here, grab this link, copy it. And then over here, and I just have this in Blog Posts because it's just got space for me to do this. You see this leaf right here? Insert Young Living link with my member number. We're going to click that. And then it's going to ask you to paste in the Young Living product that you want to add. Hit OK, and then down here, there it is. So I'm going to copy this, okay? Copy link. And now I'm going to go back over here to our sway, and that is where I'm going to highlight the text, hit Link, and then paste in that link, all right? And you can do this for as many as you want. I haven't done this for all of them yet, because there's quite a few, but I've got it done here for cedarwood, frankincense, stearanium, citrus fresh. And really, there's only... Well, Greg, you've mentioned this before in previous work sessions where we've talked about just copying code to the end of one of these links. For the vast majority of products, this is going to work, right?
Yeah, it works on pretty much any product link on youngliving.com. There are some subsites like Seed to Seal and their Young Living blog that don't, this doesn't work with that, but it does work for all the product links.
Awesome, yeah. So, excuse me, so you guys know that. That's a good thing for you to do. Okay, so we got that. So that's how you turn your sway into a signup machine. All right, now, talking about putting those sways on your blog, let's show you that real quick, since we actually have the blog pulled up already right here. So what you would do is, you know, going right over here to Blog Posts, you click Write, and I'm going to stay on the page since I've already started this. And we're going to call this Self-Care with Essential Oils. And here, I can write about, you know, tis the season for self-care.
I'm actually seeing your PowerPoint slide.
Oh, no. All right, I thought I had a new share there. Sorry about that, you guys. All right. Better?
Yes, there it is.
Perfect, all right, good. So right over here on your menu, when you go to Write, under Blog Posts, it's going to take you to the screen. Fortunately, I haven't gone too far. All right, so you want to put in your information that you want to share in your blog post, maybe share a story. And then you're going to take your sway. Now here is a sway called Self-Care with Essential Oils. We're going to hit Share. We're going to, if you're at Basic, you can copy this link and use that embed button. Or if you're at Premium and above, and you want to get the slightly bigger one, you copy your embed code here. And we go back over to our Blog Post. Hit Code View. Again, don't... Well, in this case, you do want to make sure you're not in the center of a piece of code, all right? And now we're going to paste. Then we're going to hit that code. See, it's this one right here, Code View. Hit that. And now it has loaded the sway. All right, so you can give it the blog categories. You can obviously add a nice image for this if you want to. You can share it everywhere. You can blast it out to people via email or text. You can make it password-protected if, say, you wanted to put a bunch of sways on here and share it just with your team as a resource for them to have different sways that you have access to that you want to be able to share. Obviously, you can put your excerpts here. We do have blogging training on Get Oiling. We don't quite have enough time to cover all of the ins and outs of doing so today. But I'm going to go ahead and hit Publish and show you guys what this looks like. We go over here to View Post, and you can see on Jackie's blog, we now have Self-Care with Essential Oils right there on the blog. And there's other posts here as well that you can see, and you can scroll through that beautiful sway right there on the blog. So it's a really great way for you to add value So it's a really great way for you to add value to the content that you are creating and sharing with your readership base, with your membership base, just to continually be of value, but to not have to make every single thing. For instance, if you're using these beautiful sways from Grow Workspace. All right. Now I want to get back over here. I know this is, this is pretty in-depth, you guys. So, um, I'm going to get back onto our presentation so we can go through a couple more things. Let's talk about creative ways to use sway. Um, and we will do a couple of quick demos of this as well. First is you can turn a sway into a narrated video. A really simple way that you can do this is to go over to Zoom in your Get Oiling back office. And you can share your screen in your Zoom and you can narrate a sway. You could read the words that are on it and scroll through it, uh, and then have a video that can be sent out. I believe Jan has done this, um, and did a really cool job with it. So that's one option where you can actually turn this into an even more rich media experience. Another thing that you can do, like I just mentioned, in say a protected blog post, is to create a cache of resources as a value add for your members. So I've seen sways that talk about, uh, just the thieves line, or sways that talk about, um, about savvy minerals, or just any other line of products that you wouldn't necessarily just put a product line based sway out to your prospects, but it's a great thing to share with your members to get them more educated on products that they can use and purchase and benefit from. So use these as, you know, as great things of value that you can share to educate your members as well, keep those numbers up. And you can also use a sway to build a narrative story of your own wellness journey or of your Young Living journey on the whole. How has it changed your life personally? You know, in terms of your wellness, in terms of your finances, you can create a sway that tells that story that people can read through on their own time, maybe if they receive it at work and they can't hit play on a video, right? Or if, um, if you want to be able to just give somebody something that they can scroll through on their phone. That's a really great thing that you can do with this because it sort of has that, um, that interactive capacity. It shares, um, or I'm sorry, it, um, as you scroll through it, it animates, right? And it's participatory. It's an interesting experience. So telling story is a great way to use this. You could also give live one-on-one presentations with these. There is an essential oils 101 sway that I've seen in Grow Workspace. That's something that you can use. And I mean, hello, say bye-bye to paper napkins. I don't know if people do that anymore. I know when I first got started in the industry, we were still drawing diagrams on napkins. You know, just to explain how things work, where things come from and so on. You can literally in the grocery store line with somebody, open up a sway and just kind of roll through and show them how it works and how we are different, right? All right. You can also turn your sway into a PDF to download and print. This is a secondary thing that I actually recommend that you do if you are using sways as a lead magnet, because this allows people an option to retrieve something offline and also to be able to print if say it's very heavy on information, if it's a guide for something. People really appreciate the ability to print and read over things or to have them as a checklist as they are following along with your suggestions. And actually we'll show you really quick how you can do that. Quite simple. All right. I'm going to share my, where is it? There it is. Okay. Okay. So going back to this sway here. All right. We want to hit this button right here. So there's this three dots right here. All right. And we're going to go to export, click export. Choose the format that you want to export it to. We're going to hit PDF. And then it is going to, there we go, land right in my downloads folder. Well, I mean, that's, that's how it works on my computer. And then you can actually attach that in your campaigns. So if we wanted to say, for instance, go back to the campaign that Jackie has for her oils for rescues. In that first email, you can attach that file by clicking upload file. And there's that PDF that we just got. So you can actually just have the PDF right there. Or you could make it clickable text by saying, click here for the downloadable printable version. And then we're going to take this, you see how it says edit link here? Copy this. And then we can delete it. And on click here, we're going to highlight, oops, that's not it. All right. We're going to highlight, hit insert link, paste it, open a new tab and insert. And so now you can actually have that downloaded printable version in your email as well. All right. Now let's see if we've got any more. Do we have any more questions on this? I know, again, you guys, it's a, it's a big, big topic. So we've gone over some ways to sway, seven in total, actually. First, uh, making it into a lead magnet for your funnel and maybe even making a multi-step funnel so you can get people opted in to have a 30-minute consult with you. That's powerful. You can use it as added value on your blog posts. You could turn it into a narrated shareable presentation in video. You can bundle them, make a cache of value for your members. You could also build a narrative story of your wellness journey to share live, uh, or via video if you wanted. You could give live one-on-one presentations on mobile, anywhere you are. And then of course you can turn it into that PDF to download and print it. All right. So just want to make sure that you guys remember as you're editing these, as you're creating these, and as you're building out funnels, to share this information with folks is to make it personal. Really at the core of what we've taught today is how to use a resource that someone else has created. And while that is a great leverage of your time, it is missing out on the personal. People who opt in to hear from you want to hear from you, right? They want to hear your message, your story, your value. So make sure that whatever you do, you're making this personal, right? Include your stories, include your reasons, your whys and your passion, because that is what people truly connect to. You are the reason people buy from you, right? It's not, they, they don't love Young Living yet. They got to love you first. You're going to show them the way and they'll love you for having found Young Living forever, right? So at the core of your growth strategy, no matter how you're sharing, right? If you're using this off, offline, online, creating funnels, making them into PDFs, at the core of this is your personal brand. It's how you tell your story. It's how you share who you are and your, the meaning behind everything that you do, right? Your why, your purpose, how you are out to make an impact on the world. And, you know, at the end of the day, uncovering and mapping those steps to grow that personal brand that's worthy of the crown, it's, it's not easy to do on your own. And I wanted to make sure that you guys know, because there is just a little bit of time and just a few spots left, you have an opportunity to work with me and an entire community, right? A small dedicated group of people to do just that over the course of four weeks in our become an icon personal branding intensive. This is our last call for this. We are about to do Q and A, by the way, you guys, don't worry for this way. But I do want to make sure before we go that you all know, uh, that this option is here for you. If you want to learn how to develop a strategy that will help you to become a magnetic personal brand so that people are coming to you, seeking you out, seeking your wisdom, opting into your funnels, opting into your opportunities for 30-minute calls so that they can speak to you about how you can help transform their lives. We are going to be working together in a live, live four-week session, uh, over the course of next month. We actually start next Thursday, a week from today. And all you have to do, this is no additional charge, all you have to do is get started with us as an annual Get Oiling member at basic or above. And you can learn more about how to do that at getoiling.com forward slash icon. All right. Now onto our Q and A. Let's hear it, you guys. What kind of questions do you have about using sways, setting up funnels, uh, anything that you saw today that you would appreciate some greater clarification on? We are here for you.
Sure. I got a few teed up here. So Lynn asks, is the professional services template on all our sites? Yes, it is. At basic and higher, you get access to the page builder and that comes with that specific template. Gwen had asked, is there a video overview of the Get Oiling platform? I did put a link in the Q and A to one, so go ahead and, uh, watch that one. It's, uh, basically getoiling.com/whatisgetoiling with dashes in between every word there. And asks, I jumped on a few minutes late. Are the sway presentations from Grow Workspace or are they a feature in Get Oiling? The one that we were demoing today is, I think, from Grow Workspace, uh, but you can use it with Get Oiling as we've been showing here. So, uh, they, they work very well together, actually. And I think someone had asked earlier, like, how do you, uh, make, or how do you share a sway link without it being editable? And that's something I can pop up my share screen because I actually do have that open. I can show you that here quick. So this is, I just happen to have a sway here when you're, actually I probably got to take, take two steps here. So this is somebody that was, this was a sway that was shared that is not editable by me. So I have to duplicate it first. So I can hit duplicate and I'll just say it's my copy of whatever, uh, the specific sway. Duplicate this thing. Now that'll make a copy and put it in my account. It leaves the original alone for whoever's doing this. And it'll say, do you want to edit it now or go to my sway? So I'm just going to go to edit it now. And then whenever you're sharing, and Ashley was showing this before, like you click on share, invite people to viewer edit. So you'd want to make sure it's on view if you don't want people to go in and edit your sway. So just make sure it's view before you either copy this link here or use your embed code. Taliyah says, there's a Facebook group that people share free sway. Awesome. That's cool.
Ooh, nice. Wally likes that too. Everybody, this is Wally. He's very mean. He just got back from out of town for a couple of days and he's just attached. There's an oil for that, right? All right. So, um, the best way to share sway on social media. That's a good question, Heather. I, I actually, I believe that creating a landing page like we showed today, that has the sway on the other side is the best way to share. Because that way, again, you're not putting the goods out first. You're saying, hey, I have this for you. All you have to do is opt in. And that pre-qualifies people. Because if someone's truly serious about digging into valuable information, man, especially if you've gone through the trouble of creating one of these sways yourself, right? People need to respect your process. You are a business, right? Just like you don't, you know, you don't walk into a lawyer's office expecting a three-hour free consultation, right? That's ridiculous. People shouldn't expect everything from you to be free and immediately available. So protect the assets of your business like you would if you were in any other business, right? So people have to qualify themselves in order to get valuable information from you. So I would put the sway on the, on the other side of a landing page and then share that landing page. And the landing page would talk about the benefits, right? So on the next page, I'm going to share with you my favorite secrets and recipes for simple self-care into your information here. How hard is that, right? So that's, that's what I would recommend. So that way you're sharing your landing page and more people can opt in. Um, and then of course, if you're doing that on social media, it's not just about your friends putting their information in, their friends and their friends and their friends can see it. And don't you want those people on your email list, right? All right.
Jan asks, what's the recommended way to build the cache of sways for members? Page blogs, et cetera?
Yeah. So, um, you could certainly put them onto a custom page if you wanted to. We actually have in our 90-day challenge, if you go to the help section in the back in Get Oiling, you click help, uh, and you go to the 90-day challenge, there is a breakdown of the topics that are covered. And one of those is specifically about team building. And in that one, we actually go into detail about how you can create a team resource page using the Get Oiling custom pages feature, as well as using a password protected blog post. All right. Oh, here's a good question. Helen asked, I'm assuming blog is part of website, is it optimized for SEO? So I'll let Greg answer that.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can do that. Yeah. Anything you put on the blog, uh, any words you type in a blog or images or whatever that you paste in there are optimized for SEO, basically. I mean, Google will find it, Bing will find it, you know, search engines will find it. One note about if you do paste a sway in there, it's, that doesn't get any SEO juice to your site specifically. So if you do want it to be found for something other than maybe the title, you want to put some other, uh, text in there too. So anything that you embed like that, at least anything like a sway, it's like hosted on Microsoft servers. So it doesn't see that it's your site. So that's, you know, little technical background, but basically if you put a sway in there, you want it to be found on Google, put some extra information on the bottom, maybe bits and pieces of that go in your blog post, the important parts of it. So that's an awesome question.
Let's see. Oh, well, hello Kristen. It's the first time you've heard of us. We're happy to have you here today. I'm catching up on all the chat here.
The chat is very busy today.
Uh huh. It's fantastic. All right. So anything else? Oh yeah. If, um, if you have, who was it? Uh, Facebook group is called Young Living Sway. So if you guys, that's, that's shared here, uh, by Taliyah. Thank you. You guys can go to, uh, Facebook and look for Young Living Sway and ask to get access to it. That's fantastic. Thank you for that resource. And again, we do recommend Grow Workspace. They do make beautiful, beautiful sways. All right. Let's see. Lynn says, I always send email, send, I send sways via email and use a copied link. When the people go to the sway, they have to hit the play button. Is there a way to have it automatically go to the play? I believe, um, in your actual sway settings, there are, uh, there are some controls. There aren't a great deal of controls, but there are some. Let me see.
And I think it actually depends, like if you have an account, I noticed that like after I created an account, when you share, when you open that link that you're sharing, it goes to the editor. But, or unless you don't have permission to edit it, in which case then you see it. It looks like it plays. So, um, I, uh, this could demo, I could demo this with a couple of windows, but basically I opened it up in a new browser and it went right to play. But I opened it up in the browser that I was logged in this way on, and then it went right to edit. So I think it depends on who you are, who you're logged in as. It'll go to play for people who haven't seen them before.
That makes sense. That makes sense. And, and beware, guys, we, um, we will not be, we'll be the first to say that we aren't sway experts, right? We are experts in, in leveraging great, uh, great material, uh, to share and grow your Young Living business. We happen to find sway to be one of those great things. But, but there's, uh, there's definitely some great resources out there where you can learn more about using the sways themselves and controlling them themselves. But today we're really, uh, wanting to make sure you guys knew just how many ways you can use them, uh, with Get Oiling. All right. Jan asks, uh, if we do a training on the advanced Google analytics and pixels? No ma'am, we don't. There are some great ones out there on the web. All right. Okay. So Susan, to answer your question as best I know how, uh, regarding using images, I believe I searched for rescue animals, uh, and then like just on Google and then hit images up at the top. Um, and then just, you know, then they load stuff. And ideally you want to go to, uh, someplace with licensed photographs, um, or free unlicensed photographs that you have permission to use, uh, places like shutterstock.com. That's where you can get free, uh, images that you actually pay for. Uh, and there's a number of other ones too. If you want to just search for, you know, free images for marketing, there's lots of resources out there on the web.
Yeah. One great one is unsplash.com. I put a link in the chat. That one is, uh, it's free professional photography, basically. Uh, it's not quite as extensive as shutterstock, but there's a lot of awesome options out there.
Fantastic. All right. And let's see. And, and yeah, I showed you guys where to find that landing page. It's actually up in the very top menu on the left-hand side of your Get Oiling back office. And if you don't have a Get Oiling account, you can get started at basic and above today for just $1 at getoiling.com. And all of our plans include a 30-day money-back guarantee. We really believe in the work that we're doing here and, uh, and in helping you grow. And if you don't feel like we're helping you, uh, after you've, you know, been with us for a couple of days or something like that, there's, you know, there's no contract that you're tied into. You know, come in, join the community, uh, get started on, you know, in, in improving the practices of your business. We help with every, just every aspect of what you do, uh, and have training on just about every topic you can imagine. And it's all there for you in your account. All right. Do we have any other questions or? All right, do we have any other questions or?
No questions, but Debbie posted Pixabay is another place that has free stock photos. So I just thought I'd mention that. P-I-X-A-B-A-Y.com. So Unsplash and Pixabay.
All right, I've used that one before as well. That's a good one. It's attached to a really great overlay app on the phone that I've talked about in the past as well. So fantastic, all right. Well, if we don't have any additional questions, you guys keep an eye out for that replay. And, and I might even get a little bonus out to you guys of really just a step-by-step soup to nuts. I'm going to create a funnel like this that you can pause and play and rewind and pause and play until you get yours done as well. Do we have, we got one more over here? Awesome, all, thank you Lynn. We're happy to have you. We're happy to have all of you here as a part of our community. And we look forward to seeing you on the next training on next Thursday. And we certainly are looking forward to working with those of you who are committed to growing your personal brand online in our Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. And you can find out more about that at getoiling.com forward slash icon. All right, we will see you guys next week. Take care.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.